Supervisor Brownell.
Here.
Supervisor Barnhart. Supervisor Forrest.
Here.
Supervisor Hayes.
Here.
Supervisor Ferrara.
Here.
Supervisor Cronin-Wedder.
Here.
Supervisor Reinhardt.
Here.
Supervisor Partee.
Here.
Supervisor Heisen.
Here.
Supervisor Dantrow.
Here.
Supervisor Enzlow.
Here.
Supervisor Shipley.
Here.
You have a quorum, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you very much. Please rise to the Pledge of Allegiance and a moment of silence. A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. Republic which stands. Under the individual liberty and custom of the Constitution. Okay, please be seated. Next up, we have a presentation by the Community Science Institute Grayson Scheidemantel. Welcome.
Where shall I go?
Right there.
Okay. Excellent.
Keep the microphone probably close to you.
Sure.
Hello, everyone. My name is Grayson Scheidemantel, and I'm the Executive Director at the Community Science Institute. Thank you all so much for allowing me to be here today to talk about the great work that we do at CSI in Seneca County. In the folders that I've passed around, you'll find two items. The first is a handout that looks like this, that has information about CSI's stream monitoring program in Seneca County, as well as some common questions that you all might have on the back. You'll also find in the folders a formal funding request letter. So, the Community Science Institute, or CSI, is a 501(c)(3) nonprofit with a mission to partner with community-based volunteer groups to monitor local streams and lakes by collecting and disseminating regulatory-quality data that can inform management strategies. And we do this through our four distinct monitoring programs. The first is our Synoptic Stream Monitoring Program, which is the program I'll be talking to you all about tonight, our Harmful Algal Bloom Program, our Bio-Monitoring Program, and our Red Flag Stream Monitoring Program. CSI's dedicated volunteer groups in Seneca County currently monitor five streams in Seneca County, which you can see on the map on your handout. Our volunteers monitor Canoga, Williamson, Burrows, Johnsons, and Sheldon Drake Creek. And I'm privileged to be joined here tonight by Jody and Griff, who are volunteers for our Sheldon Drake Creek monitoring team. Our volunteers work together to sample several sites along each stream three times a year with the goal of collecting two base flow samples and one stormwater sample. They then transport the samples to our state-certified lab, where our talented lab staff analyze samples for pH, total hardness, alkalinity, nutrients like phosphorus and nitrogen, total suspended solids, turbidity, conductivity, and chloride, just to name a few. CSI's stream monitoring program has a number of strengths. The first of which is that we have over 20 years of experience monitoring water quality. This means that we've been able to establish a long-term dataset of baseline water quality for the Cayuga Lake watershed, as well as have built a talented and experienced team of staff and volunteers. Next, we operate an independent state-certified lab, which means that our data is upheld to rigorous scientific standards and is, in fact, regulatory-quality, so it can be used to help inform management decisions. In fact, in 2014, CSI's certified E. coli data on Cayuga Lake was used to delist the southern portion of Cayuga Lake as impaired for bacteria, which emphasizes an important strength of our program. Not only would it identify streams that might be in trouble, it can also clear up any confusion about which streams are healthy. In this case, we proved that Cayuga Lake was healthy. Next, all of the data that we collect is housed in our own public water quality database. It currently houses over 87,000 water quality results that are publicly available to anyone in this room, the general public, research scientists, you name it. If you can use a computer, you can access it. Our database is useful because it generates graphs that allow for you to easily identify trends across space and time in water quality. The data on our database can be used to help bring in state dollars by municipalities by allowing them to qualify for restoration grants. Importantly, our stream monitoring program also empowers community members to become stewards of their local water resources. And at CSI, we encourage volunteers to inform the monitoring practices that we're doing so that we can be truly community-led. We aim to address the concerns of the folks who actually live and work in the area. For example, we began monitoring Canoga Creek in 2015 because a homeowner who lives on Canoga Creek approached us and said he was concerned about the water quality there. Finally, we engage in watershed-wide outreach and education. For example, in 2019, we hosted a forum in Ovid, which brought together farmers, scientists, and community members to discuss nutrients and water quality in both the Seneca and the Cayuga Lake watersheds. This was a really successful event because it facilitated an open conversation between folks with many different perspectives and expertise. Today, I would like to ask Seneca County for your support for our stream monitoring program here in Seneca County. The data that we're collecting here is an important contribution to our understanding of the health of the entire Cayuga Lake watershed. Our community-science-based approach also helps to build a sense of community and responsibility for the care of our water in the Finger Lakes region. CSI has monitored these locations for several years without support, relying on our other income streams to cover the cost. However, financial constraints in the past few years necessitate direct funding for these streams if we're to continue monitoring here. To ensure the long-term sustainability of our monitoring program in Seneca County, we require financial support. So, on the formal letter request that's in your folders, I've outlined the cost of our monitoring program in Seneca County. And I would like to respectfully ask the board to please consider our request for $16,105.50 in 2023 to monitor the 13 sites in Seneca County three times a year. In the letter, you'll see a table of the cost of each analyte and the justification for measuring each one. And I'd like to thank you all for your time and attention and allowing me to be here tonight. And if you have any questions or concerns, I'd be very happy to address any of them now.
I have a question.
Of course.
It says, you know, in the middle column here, some of these pH things and total hardness, turbidity, conductivity. How do you decide how many times that that's monitored, or you run the sample?
Yeah, that's a great question. So, pH, total hardness, and alkalinity, we only monitor those once a year because they tend to not fluctuate very much throughout the year. They tend to stay pretty constant. So, it's not really worth the money to monitor those several times a year, unless you have a specific concern about one of those analytes. But when it comes to nutrients and bacteria, anything having to do with sedimentation or salts, those ones are much more variable, so it's worth the effort to monitor those more frequently.
I'd just like to thank you for your presentation. And I'm sure our Finance Committee and Environmental Committee will talk into this and see what we can do.
Thank you so much.
How many years do your results go back?
So, our results go all the way back until 2002. We started with our Fall Creek Group, monitoring water quality. But for Seneca County, our results go back to 2015 for Canoga, Williamson, and Burrows. And we just started monitoring Johnsons and Sheldon Drake Creek in 2020.
What have you seen as far as the runoff, percentage of runoff that runs in throughout the year?
Sure, so like loading of the pollutants into the lake. So, we don't have enough data yet for Johnsons and Sheldon Drake Creek, but I can speak a little bit to Canoga, Burrows, and Williams. You know, those streams have phosphorus and nitrogen levels that are generally above the EPA recommendations for phosphorus and nitrogen for streams in our ECO region. I will say that compared to some of the other streams in the watershed, although they exceed the levels, they're not quite as high as some of the streams that I've seen in our watershed. And because those are relatively smaller creeks, they don't necessarily contribute as much nutrient loading to the lake as a bigger stream like maybe the Cayuga inlet would. But...
Do you attribute that to what the farmers use to put on their fields runoff?
So, high nutrient levels can come from a number of sources. And agricultural runoff is one of them. We can't know for sure what the exact source is. It could also be things like sewage contamination can also cause high nutrient, or, excuse, yeah, high nutrient runoff.
That's our number-one resource in Seneca County.
Yeah, absolutely.
So, I would expect that would... Thank you.
Yeah, of course.
Any more questions? Okay, well, thank you. And like Paul said, we'll probably take it before the Finance Committee at a later date.
Okay, thank you so much.
Thank you. Next up, petitioners or open privilege of the floor. Would anybody like to address the board here? Okay, yep. Please state your name for the record, please.
My name is Missy Behringer. Good evening, and thank you for allowing me to speak to you this evening. As I just stated, my name is Missy Behringer, and I am an enrolled Cayuga Nation citizen. I am a member of the Wolf Clan, which is one of the five clans's that make up the Cayuga Nation Council, our undisputed governing body. As of June 1st of this year, I am also the Chief Operating Officer of the Nation Enterprises. I am proud to be working for my nation for the betterment of all of our Cayuga people, and I look forward to a day when the local community governance and the Cayuga Nation work together to further our mutual interests and make Seneca County an even better place for all of us. With that goal in mind, there are two key falsehoods that have plagued the relationship between this board and my nation for many years. And I wanted to provide clarity on these two issues so that they can be put to rest once and for all. First, the Cayuga Nation has a reservation. It was established by the Treaty of Canadeguwa and was signed in 1794. That treaty established the Cayuga Reservation of 64,015 acres surrounding the northern half of Cayuga Lake. A reservation can only be extinguished or altered by mutual consent of the parties involved, and this has never happened. The following entities recognize the Cayuga Nation Reservation: The highest court in New York State, the U.S. Supreme Court, the U.S. Department of Justice, the U.S. Department of the Interior, the U.S. Department of Homeland Security, the U.S. Department of Housing, the U.S. Department of Energy, the National Indian Gaming Commission, and every other federal agency recognizes the Cayuga Nation Reservation. I would ask that it is time for Seneca County to accept and acknowledge it, too. Further assertions to the contrary are not truthful. They are unproductive and feed an atmosphere that does not allow for the forming of alliances. Second, the other falsehood I would like to have end tonight is that there is a leadership dispute within the Cayuga Nation. There is not currently, nor has there been any leadership dispute for a number of years. 62% of Cayuga Nation members voiced affirmative support for our current council and established our current form of governance. The balance voiced a different choice or were silent. Clearly, there are a small number of nation members who did not like the decision made by the majority of our nation's citizens. They are free to have their opinions. But because they disagree, they do not get to take matters into their own hands. I am one of those 62% who actively chose our current leadership. And they do not get to overrule what the majority of Cayuga Nation citizens chose simply because they did not like the outcome. The last time the U.S. elected a president with a larger majority was in 1820, when they elected James Monroe. This small group would have you believe that governing with the chief system is the way of governance that must be followed and that we, the Cayuga people, are forced to continue to follow it forever. And that is simply not the case. Historically, many of the Iroquois nations' forms of governance have evolved over the last 200-plus years. The Seneca Nation moved to a democratic form of government in the mid-1800s. They elect their leaders in general elections every two years. The Oneida Nation moved to a nation representative leader 25-plus years ago. The Mohawk nation's governance has evolved over time, and today is a democracy with annual elections held to choose chiefs who govern their nation. We, the Cayuga Nation, once had a female chief. The federal government recognizes each of these unique forms of governance and deals exclusively with these leaders, including those of the Cayuga Nation. We do not live in a world where simply not liking what the majority chooses allows dissenters to violently take control of properties and businesses they do not own, threaten Cayuga citizens and nation employees, most of whom are your constituents. Nor do we allow our Cayuga citizens to commit crimes, steal millions of dollars of nation revenue, violate nation ordinances by operating illegal businesses, and attempt to hide under the nation's sovereignty. We have rules, requirements, regulations, and a justice system that allows us to hold our enrolled nation members to these predetermined standards. While we have spent years trying to bring these dissident individuals to justice, and we will continue to do so, we cannot do it alone. We need your help to bring the remaining felons to justice who are not Cayuga Nation citizens. And this is also a good time to address the issue of Canadian Cayuga involvement. In 1784, 10 years prior to the establishment of the Cayuga Reservation by the Treaty of Canadeguwa, Joseph Brant's Cayuga followers, along with his followers from each of the Iroquois nations, chose to leave and go to Canada to avoid persecution from the newly-formed United States government for fighting on behalf of the crown in the Revolutionary War. Those that stayed consistent with the Cayuga Nation's position of neutrality in the war stayed behind. Unfortunately, they were the very people that were driven off their land by the Sullivan Campaign. In 1794, when the Canadegu Treaty was signed, establishing the Cayuga Nation Reservation, our nation leader, Clint Half Town's ancestor, was one of the people who signed this treaty on behalf of our nation. This history continues forward, and we could talk about it for the rest of the night and probably still not cover it all. The relevant point I am trying to bring to your attention tonight is that the Cayugas that reside today in Canada on the Six Nations Reserve are a separate and distinct First Nations group and have no rights or land holdings in the United States. Those rights were established long after they left. While we share the same name, we have different clans's, different enrollment requirements, and different forms of government. This was acknowledged by the federal courts in the land claim case filed in 1980, when the Canadian Cayugans tried to insert themselves, and the court refused. Even federal law says that enrolled First Nations citizens of foreign countries are treated as non-native in the United States. They are not members of my nation and have no viable claim to our lands here in Seneca County. The Cayuga Nation has a sovereign right to self-govern, and we have done just that. Our members have spoken overwhelmingly that the five-man council representing the five Cayuga clans's is who we have chosen as our leaders. We have selected a form of governance that we will continue to follow. I ask you tonight to acknowledge that the Cayuga Nation has a reservation and that has no leadership dispute. These two important acknowledgements by the board will pave the way for a future from which we would all benefit. I would ask that the board acknowledge these two facts. Thank you for your time and attention.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Would anybody else like to address the board? Okay.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is B.J. Radford, and I appreciate your time tonight. I am the Chief Financial Officer of the Cayuga Nation, and I became a Cayuga Nation employee in 2003. I have many times considered asking to address this board, but was only moved to do so tonight as a result of the total frustration and great sadness that I feel about the current state of affairs in this community. I am not here tonight to speak on behalf of the nation. I am here to speak on behalf of myself. I would like to ensure that everyone here understands the current and potentially escalating peril that your community now faces. I will not waste my time or yours reviewing how we got to where we are today. I am very clear that the blame lays at the feet of all involved. The Cayuga Nation, this board, and local law enforcement all played a role in getting us here. Instead, I'd like to focus on what can be done about it. There are 13 homes purchased by the Cayuga Nation occupied by squatters, Cayuga Nation members, who do not pay rent. They have not paid rent in over 10 years. They don't pay their water bills. Cayuga Nation pays their water bills. They certainly should not have to, but they do because they own the property. This is a problem that needs solving, and I'm at a loss to find any reasonable person who thinks there is justification for their behavior. If anyone here is a landlord, I'd like to know how long you would tolerate a non-rent payer. 10 years? A solution is needed. The two properties before you in my handouts are what I'd like to talk about tonight. The first one is 2954 East Baird Street Extension in the town of Seneca Falls. This is the former Coville Farm and was purchased by the Cayuga Nation in 2010. The property consists of a brick farmhouse, a barn, and 175 acres of land. It has been occupied by a variety of dissenters over the years. For the last few months, it has been occupied by the Red Eye family, two brothers, Marcus and Buck, and their family and friends. The Red Eyes are not enrolled members of the Cayuga Nation. They moved in, put up a roadside wire fence, erected cattle gates at the ends of both driveways. I have enclosed pictures of both men taken in the last week. Note the weapons in their hands. I have also included a newspaper article recounting the shooting that took place at the Varick property in 2015. Marcus was one of the shooters, and as you can read, is a convicted felon. Note in the last sentence of the article, he used a shotgun. I mention a shotgun because on March 13th, Marcus approached a Cayuga Nation employee while he was on a tractor farming the land far behind the farmhouse and threatened him with a shotgun. A report was filed, and no arrest was made. On July 22nd, the Red Eyes pitched a pop-up tent and opened Big Buck Dispensary in the property's front yard. Lots of road signs and flags followed. In the last week, body armor, automatic weapons, and clubs have all been visible at the property. No arrests have been made. Fireworks, spotlighting, unsafe driving, loud noises at night have occurred regularly. No arrests have been made. The last two pictures were taken this morning of the property. They actually look pretty good. The crowds and bad behavior typically doesn't start this early in the day. I would like to point out the language that you may not be able to read on the white sign. "No warning shots fired, no trespassing, Second Amendment." Nice addition to the neighborhood. This operation is in violation of the Cayuga Nation Business Ordinance and many Town of Seneca Falls zoning laws. I've been told Baird Street residents fear for their lives. I don't blame them. I imagine the eyesore in their neighborhood doesn't make them happy either. I then turn to 2133 Lake Road in the town of Seneca Falls. This property is not owned by the Cayuga Nation. It was purchased in 2014 by the John family using revenue earned illegally by operating the Cayuga Nation store. They put the deed in the name of the Cayuga Nation Enterprises. This entity has no connection to the Cayuga Nation. This house has been occupied by Carlin Seneca, a Cayuga Nation member and son of Wanda John, for years. I have included an article dated July of 2014 recounting the events of May 11th, 2014, when Carlin drove a van through the fence at the nation's cigarette factory while drunk, with a drunk minor in his vehicle. As a result, he too is a convicted felon. In October of last year, he dragged a shed into his front yard and opened Grandma Approved Sovereign Trade, a weed dispensary. I have also included some pictures taken of this property this morning. Again, it looks its best in the early morning hours. I can only imagine how the people in that neighborhood feel. This operation, too, is in violation of the Cayuga Nation Business Ordinance and several Town of Seneca Falls zoning laws. On February 2nd, Carlin went to the Half Town resident and threw a cement block through a car windshield, ripped the mailbox out of the ground and threw it at the house. He is on pre-trial release for this offense. This past Saturday, Carlin was driving a vehicle in which a passenger threw a wrench into the back windshield of an occupied Cayuga Nation Police Department vehicle, shattering the window. This past Sunday, Carlin drove a vehicle through the gas pumps at the Lakeside Trading Store, going the wrong direction, and attempted to run over a Cayuga Nation Police Department officer. I believe the water bill due the town on this property is in excess of $6,000, despite his promise to bring his balance current. No property taxes have been paid on this property since the John family took ownership. Current taxes and arrears are over $60,000. The property is not protected by sovereignty. The Cayuga Nation has notified the town and county numerous times of this. Why has it not been foreclosed upon? I believe strongly in never pointing out a problem without offering a solution. I am here tonight to implore you to do what is best for this community. Only two groups involved care about this community: you and the Cayuga Nation. Before lawless behavior grows, before neighborhoods become eyesores, before more of your constituents fear for their lives, and all that will happen without action. With each passing event that goes on without repercussions to the perpetrators, more bad actors come to the area. I beg you to go back to being a community where bad behavior is not tolerated. People don't get to take properties they don't own. Criminals are punished for their crimes. Dissenters don't get to come before you and claim to be official representatives of the Cayuga Nation, and you treat them as so. Because if that's the case, I will be here next month representing the state of New York. Law enforcement respects each other and works together for the good of the community. The Cayuga Nation and local politicians and law enforcement have not done a good job of forming alliances. Again, all involved have been at fault. Now is the moment. Work together, if not for yourselves, for your constituents, before this becomes a place where real estate has little value because no one wants to live here. Worse yet, before someone gets hurt. Appreciate your time. Any questions? Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else want to address the board? Okay, nobody else wants to address the board? I call the open privilege of the floor over for the evening. Mr. Ferrar, you wanted to do something?
Mr. Chairman, yes. I'd like to make a motion to enter into executive session. I move to enter executive session pursuant to Sections 105, 1, C, D, E, and F and of the New York State Open Meetings Law and invite all members of the Board of Supervisors, the County Manager, the Personnel Officer, and County Attorney. Can I have a second for that?
Second.
Thank you.
Okay. All those in favor, any discussion on this? Okay, all those in favor of going into executive session, say aye. Aye. Are you no nay? We're going to go into executive session. We're going to go over to the Heroes Room, so people don't have to get up and leave. Okay. Okay.
Next up is approval of meeting minutes for July 12, 2022.
Second.
Any discussion? A little favors say aye.
Aye.
Both carried. Next up reports the standing committees supervisor party, mental health services.
Yep, thank you, Mr. Chairman. The mental health services committee met on July 26. We have one resolution in front of the board tonight to approve the contract amendment for Robert Shields. And then later in the meeting under new business, there's a draft resolution that's in your pocket that will be referred to the board tonight under rule 29. It is to authorize amendments to two mental health service contracts for 2022 in order to provide coverage due to the loss of the full-time psychiatrist. That's all I have.
Very good, thank you supervisor party. Supervisor Bernhardt, planning development agriculture and tourism.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, happy to be here. We have three items in front of the board tonight, the first of which authorizes the Board of Supervisors to enter a contract with High Road Community Planning to conduct a housing needs assessment for Seneca County. We also have a resolution to approve an environmental review for that housing needs assessment project as well as declaring ourselves the lead agency for a seeker action on the Verona Village renovation project. That's all.
Okay, thank you supervisor Bernhardt. Next up supervisor Reinhardt, public safety.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, there'll be four items coming before the board out of public safety, all are in your pocket, I expect no other business other than that.
Okay, thank you. Supervisor Ferrara, personnel.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, the Personnel Committee will be recommending filling positions in the office of Aging Department Coordinator Services, Aging Services Specialist, Aging Service Aid Part-Time, Food Service Helper, Motor Vehicles License Clerk, and Code Enforcement Office. That all came out of committee, does not need board approval. We have a resolution in front of the board tonight to hire above the start rate for the Director of Preventative Services. And we also went into executive session and came out, no action was taken from that executive session. That's all I have, sir.
Okay, very good supervisor Ferrara. Supervisor Hayes, Water and Sewer Treatment Management and Operations.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We had a discussion at our committee meeting, there was a water main break the weekend before at the million gallon tank at the former Seneca Army Depot, but we were able to bypass the leak, so water was carried to the hamlet. We discussed the need for notification of more efficiently of the breaks, to be proactive, not reactive, so research is being done on some type of water alarming. Mitch also reported that the Hunt Engineers submitted the final INI study for sewer one and two, and representatives from the Commission to decommission Willard will be visiting August 16 at the former Willard Drug Treatment Campus. Second quarter bills have been mailed out and MRB continues to work on the water authority plans.
Thank you supervisor Hayes. Supervisor Shipley, Indian Affairs.
Thank you Chairman Heisen. Under Indian Affairs at the last committee meetings, we discussed the county attorney will attend the NISAC conference and will attend the standing committee meetings in Buffalo. We will be submitting Resolution 85-22 that this board passed earlier this year, seeking support from NISAC to support our efforts to make Seneca County whole from New York State for loss of property and school tax revenues by the Kiuga Nation 73 properties. At some point, I expect the Indian Affairs Committee to discuss what has transpired in the last week at the Kiuga Nation properties. Right now, we'll let the dust settle and we'll try and take a look at this and see how we formulate an approach to talk again with the Bureau of Indian Affairs in Washington. Thank you.
Thank you supervisor Shipley. Next up supervisor Jeff Trout, Government Operations.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, we just have one issue tonight and that's to move the October 11th Board Meeting to Papa Bear.
Okay, very good, thank you supervisor Trout. Supervisor Corona Water, Environmental Affairs.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, I wasn't here for the committee meeting, but I got my two cents in at the Kiuga and Seneca County Soil and Water Presentation on cover crops that I mentioned that I wanted to get a summit together of the farmers and DEC and soil and water. And I passed around pictures of the plumes in the tributaries after a rainstorm and a lot of these people had opened their eyes. I just urged the whole barn full of farmers at Ralph Lot's farm to utilize the soil and water programs are available to them for the cover crop program. Jeff and Robin Lot gave a very nice presentation on cover crops, you know, they take a little bit to trial and error, but the end result is very good. Tonight is Hillary Lambert's retirement party at Tiganic State Park, I'd just like to thank her for all the work she did for the Kiuga Lake Watershed Network, it's her annual picnic tonight. And as far as wastewater treatment plants, our goal should be to have tertiary treatment, it's like a third treatment process to clean up the waters. You can see with these maps I passed around, the mudlocks is closed, the water coming out of the canal just swirls around like in a bathtub there and right across from the park and the village. I sent videos to most of you that the algae blooms are the whole north end of the lake when they bloom, side to side. But last week, we didn't have any algae blooms. And the bass fishing tournament that's going on right now, they love Kiuga Lake, they're catching more fish than they do anywhere in the country, it's the best fishing they've had in the country. So that's the good news. The Outdoor News is a bi-weekly magazine, it's very popular, has a fishing report, and on Kiuga Lake, they don't say it's the best bass fishing, and they say it's experienced algae bloom. So that's kind of advertisement we're getting, we need to worry about. And Seneca County Soil and Water, my number right, got a, was it $314,000 grant or $34,000 grant from Pure Waters Association?
I think it's the high one, 300.
It's like $314,000 grant they got from the Pure Waters Association, which is great. And that's all I have.
Paul, I have one quick question for you. The presentation we heard earlier from Community Science Institute, don't we already fund though, that group?
No, we fund the Kiuga Lake Watershed Network.
Do they do the same testing?
They do the testing and they use a different lab that the data is more valuable to the EPA because of the standards, it's Fresh Water Institute, it's the other lab that Kiuga Lake Watershed Network uses. So CSI has its own program. There's still testing going on on all these streams from Kiuga Lake Watershed Network, but they use a different lab that they say is better.
So would be your recommendation to stay where we are?
We aren't funding them at all right now, I don't think, so.
Yeah, that's what I mean. I mean, if we're already doing the same testing, why test twice?
Yeah, they aren't, we're doing, we aren't funding them at all, but they do have a purpose whereas they put all information together, they have a webpage.
Basically, they're competitors. Well, it might be valuable to talk to them and talk to the Kiuga Lake Watershed Network to see where they're deploying their resources, if Kiuga Lake Watershed Network is on these five or 10 creeks, maybe CSI is doing a different five creeks, we just need to make sure we're not duplicating the work and.
Absolutely.
More work is good, but duplicating the work is bad.
You know, we aren't using them right now. And they have a purpose, but not so much directly to Seneca County because of Bill Eber and Tom Cassella do the testing for, you know, the creeks on the county side, you know.
I just wanted to ask while this presentation was in it, all the supervisors.
Yep, I plan on bringing it up at committee meetings.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
What's come the creeks are all got that black scummy stuff in the mouthful now, stinks.
It's not good.
Maybe we need to pay for some testing.
Yeah, they can, they can, the data is readily available, it's, you know, I've passed it around here a couple of times, what's coming out of these tributaries isn't good, it's thousands of times above the recommended level.
I know two of them in Verick, they really stink and that stuff's just sitting there, like it just looks like.
To conduct a housing needs assessment for Seneca County. We also have a resolution to approve an environmental review for that housing needs assessment project, as well as declaring ourselves the lead agency for a seeker action on the Verona Village renovation project. That's all.
Okay. Thank you Supervisor Barnhart. Next up Supervisor Reinhardt, Public Safety.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. There'll be four items coming before the board out of Public Safety. All are in your packet. I expect no other business other than that.
Okay. Thank you Supervisor Ferrara, Personnel.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The Personnel Committee will be recommending filling positions in the Office of Aging Department, Coordinator of Services, Aging Services Specialist, Aging Service Aid Part-Time, Food Service Helper, Motor Vehicles License Clerk, and Code Enforcement Office. That all came out of committee, does not need board approval. We have a resolution in front of the board tonight to hire above the start rate for the Director of Preventative Services. And we also went into executive session and came out, no action was taken from that executive session. That's all I have, sir.
Okay. Very good Supervisor Ferrara. Supervisor Hayes, Water and Sewer Treatment Management and Operations.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We had a discussion at our committee meeting. There was a water main break the weekend before at the Million Gallon Tank at the former Seneca Army Depot. But we were able to bypass the leak, so water was carried to the hamlet. We discussed the need for notification of more efficiently of the breaks, to be proactive, not reactive. So research is being done on some type of water alarming. Mitch also reported that the Hunt Engineers submitted the final INI study for sewer one and two, and representatives from the Commission to decommission Willard will be visiting August 16th at the former Willard Drug Treatment Campus. Second quarter bills have been mailed out, and MRB continues to work on the water authority plans.
Thank you Supervisor Hayes. Supervisor Shipley, Indian Affairs.
Thank you Chairman Heisen. Under Indian Affairs at the last committee meetings, we discussed the county attorney will attend the NISAC conference and will attend the Standing Committee meetings in Buffalo. We will be submitting Resolution 85-22 that this board passed earlier this year, seeking support from NISAC to support our efforts to make Seneca County whole from New York State for loss of property and school tax revenues by the Keoga Nation 73 properties. At some point, I expect the Indian Affairs Committee to discuss what has transpired in the last week at the Keoga Nation properties. Right now, we'll let the dust settle, and we'll try and take a look at this and see how we formulate an approach to talk again with the Bureau of Indian Affairs in Washington. Thank you.
Thank you Supervisor Shipley. Next up Supervisor Jeff Trout, Government Operations.
Yep. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We just have one issue tonight, and that's to move the October 11th board meeting to Papa Bear.
Okay. Very good. Thank you Supervisor Trout. Supervisor Corona Water, Environmental Affairs.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I wasn't here for the committee meeting, but I got my two cents in at the Keoga and Seneca County Soil and Water presentation on cover crops that I mentioned that I wanted to get a summit together of the farmers and DEC and soil and water. And I passed around pictures of the plumes in the tributaries after a rainstorm, and a lot of these people had opened their eyes. I just urged the whole barn full of farmers at Ralph Lott's farm to utilize the soil and water programs that are available to them for the cover crop program. Jeff and Robin Lott gave a very nice presentation on cover crops. You know, they take a little bit to trial and error, but the end result is very good. Tonight is Hillary Lambert's retirement party at Tiganic State Park. I'd just like to thank her for all the work she did for the Keoga Lake Watershed Network. It's her annual picnic tonight. And as far as wastewater treatment plants, our goal should be to have tertiary treatment. It's like a third treatment process to clean up the waters. You can see with these maps I passed around, the mudlocks is closed, the water coming out of the canal just swirls around like in a bathtub there. And right across from the park and the village, I sent videos to most of you that the algae blooms are the whole north end of the lake when they bloom, side to side. Last week, we didn't have any algae blooms. And the bass fishing tournament that's going on right now, they love Keoga Lake, they're catching more fish than they do anywhere in the country. It's the best fishing they've had in the country. So that's the good news. The Outdoor News is a bi-weekly magazine that's very popular, has a fishing report. And on Keoga Lake, they don't say it's the best bass fishing, and they say it's experienced an algae bloom. So that's kind of advertisement we're getting that we need to worry about. And Seneca County Soil and Water, my number, right, got a, was it $314,000 grant or $34,000 grant from Pure Waters Association?
I think it's the high one, 300.
It's like $314,000 grant they got from the Pure Waters Association, which is great. And that's all I have.
Paul, I have one quick question for you. The presentation we heard earlier from Community Science Institute, don't we already fund though, that group?
No. We fund the Keoga Lake Watershed Network.
Do they do the same testing?
They do the testing, and they use a different lab that the data is more valuable to the EPA because of the standards. It's Freshwater Institute, the other lab, that Keoga Lake Watershed Network uses. So CSI has its own program. There's still testing going on on all these streams from Keoga Lake Watershed Network, but they use a different lab that they say is better.
So would be your recommendation to stay where we are?
We aren't funding them at all right now, I don't think.
Yeah, that's what I mean. I mean, if we're already doing the same testing, why test twice?
Yeah, they aren't, we're doing, we aren't funding them at all, but they do have a purpose, whereas they put all the information together. They have a webpage.
Basically, they're competitors.
Well, it might be valuable to talk to them and talk to the Keoga Lake Watershed Network to see where they're deploying their resources. If Keoga Lake Watershed Network is on these five or 10 creeks, maybe CSI is doing a different five creeks. We just need to make sure we're not duplicating the work.
Absolutely.
More work is good, but duplicating the work is bad.
You know, we aren't using them right now. And they have a purpose, but not so much directly to Seneca County because of Bill Eber and Tom Cassella do the testing for, you know, the creeks on the county side, you know?
I just wanted to ask while this presentation was in it, all the supervisors.
Yep. I plan on bringing it up at committee meetings.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
What's come the creeks are all got that black scummy stuff in the mouthful now. Stinks.
It's not good.
Maybe we need to pay for some testing.
Yeah, they can, they can, the data is readily available. It's, you know, I've passed it around here a couple of times. What's coming out of these tributaries isn't good. It's thousands of times above the recommended level.
I know two of them in Verick, they really stink, and that stuff's just sitting there. Like, it just looks like manure almost.
Maybe the fish like it.
Rotten algae, probably rotten algae. Probably rotten algae, isn't it? Yeah, that stuff stinks.
Yeah, it's a type of bacteria. My kid and my cat were swimming out in front of the house a couple of weeks ago, and they were both sick for a couple of days.
Did you say your cat was swimming?
Yeah. Yeah, the cat like, the cat thinks it's a Labrador.
Okay.
Okay. On that, thank you.
Really leave it alone.
Supervisor Corona Water. Next up Supervisor Don Trout, Public Works.
I have nothing to report outside the resolutions that'll fall on the agenda.
Okay. Supervisor Reynolds, Finance.
Thank you Chairman Heisen. I have, under new business, I'm going to have one resolution for Workman's Comp budget that we kind of overlooked, and we got to get it done by the 15th of August, so it'll be coming at the end of the meeting.
Okay. Thank you Supervisor Reynolds. Anybody have any special committees to report on?
Mr. Chairman, I do. The Broadband Committee continues to meet the first Wednesday of each month. We do have kind of a lot of moving parts right now. We're currently analyzing the unserved and underserved data for Seneca County that we received from DPS. We're looking into the USDA Reconnect Program Round Four Funding Opportunity that was just announced last week. Mitch and I actually have a Zoom meeting tomorrow afternoon with the Yates County Broadband Project Lead to discuss their experience with the Reconnect Program. We addressed the ARPA Committee two weeks ago, giving them kind of like a heads up to make, that we might make a funding request, though we don't have anything, an official proposal yet. And then there's a couple of other balls in the air. Mitch, did I miss anything?
Kyle, Dave.
Got it.
Okay.
Okay, very good. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I got, I had a jury board meeting finally, been two, three years, but we finally had one. We met with Barry Porsh and Judge Dorn and Sumoleski, and we talked about jury situation, and they're doing pretty good. They got some, I don't want to say decent court cases, but got some big court cases coming up, and they're ready for them, and that was about it.
Okay. Good job.
The IDA met on the 4th. They just passed one resolution, inducement resolution for Wilkins RV. Should be a good project. This is the second one. They moved over to Junius on the south side of the throughway now instead of the north side of the throughway. So they have the utilities they're going to need to hook up their facility properly, and it won't be on a septic, it'll be hooked to our sewer.
Mm-hmm.
Well, we don't have to cross over the throughway anymore and make any special, you know, connections. Yeah, they're going to go on, yep, on the south side on 318. Ernie's got a new business in town.
Good, Ernie. Thank you Supervisor Trout. Okay, Chairman's remarks. I don't have any remarks today. I wanted to have some, but I think, like Bob says, let the dust settle before we talk about the Indians. County Manager's remarks.
I don't have anything tonight, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, County Attorney's remarks.
I just want to add from Supervisor Shipley that NISAC did accept the resolution, so it will be on the agenda at the September meeting.
Thank you, Dave. Dave, do you have any comments on the Treaty of Canandaigua as far as what they were pointing out? I mean, we just had this discussion a month ago.
That needs to be referred to your federal representatives. I can't, I can't go anywhere now. I mean, the law is clear on it, unless the federal government does something about it, it's, that's what it is.
Who's my federal representative? Are you talking Congressman and?
Congressman and Senator.
Senator?
It is, it's a federal legislative action that would have to ratify the treaty in order to usurp the current status quo.
Well, with my recollection of the Treaty of Canandaigua does not mention anything about the Keugas.
I don't know.
And I will, I will volunteer some other information that last Thursday, after the incident that happened Wednesday, I talked with Senator Schumer, Representative from Rochester, the Chairman Heisen had spoken to also. And we asked Senator Schumer to get with the Bureau of Indian Affairs and find out what, whatever happened to the investigation that Senator Schumer requested from the Bureau of Indian Affairs. So that's still pending.
You're done?
I am. Sorry to hog your time.
Okay. Communications.
Communications number 91 through 106 have been received and filed. Thanks.
Very good. Thank you. Next up are Resolutions and motions. Number 14, Public Works, Supervisor Trout.
Board of Supervisors authorizes the Facilities Department to request bids for the repointing of the flagstone foundations at the Three Bears Complex.
Support. Second there. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Both carried. Number 15.
Board of Supervisors authorizes 2022 budget adjustments for increase in CHIPS funding for Senate County Highway Department.
Support. Second there. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Both carried. Number 16.
Board of Supervisors authorizes 2022 budget adjustment for increased paving funding for Senate County Highway.
Motion. Second. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Both carried. Number 17.
Supervisors authorize the implementation and funding in the first instance, 100% of the federal aid and state marshmallow program and eligible costs for transportation, federal aid project, and appropriate funds, therefore, for the Frotneck Road over Truittensburg Creek Bridge.
Support. Second there. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Both carried. Thank you Supervisor Don Trout. Next up Supervisor Jeff Trout, Government Operations, number 18.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Move that we amend the rules of order and hold our board meeting on October 11, 2022, at 6:00 PM at the former courthouse in Over, New York, known as Papa Bear.
Support. Second there. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Both carried. Thank you Supervisor Jeff Trout. Next up Supervisor Ferrara.
Thank you, sir. Board of Supervisors authorized hiring above state rate for Director of Preventative Health Services position in the Health Department effective immediately.
Support. Second there. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Both carried. Thank you Supervisor Ferrara. Next up Supervisor Reinhardt, Public Safety, number 20.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Supervisors authorize second school resource officer position for the South Seneca School District.
Support. Second there. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Both carried. Number 21.
Board of Supervisors adopts Seneca County Fire Investigation Team standard operating procedures.
Support. Second. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Both carried. 22.
Board of Supervisors authorizes and directs County Manager to sign an intermunicipal agreement with Monroe County for medical examiner services.
Support. Second. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Both carried. 23.
Board of Supervisors approves purchase of portable radios for hazardous materials team using grant funding.
Support. Second. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Both carried. Thank you Supervisor Reinhardt. Next up Supervisor Barnhart, Planning Development Agriculture and Tourism, number 24.
Board of Supervisors authorized contract with High Road Community Planning and Analytics to conduct a housing needs assessment for Seneca County.
Support. Second there. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Both carried. 25.
Board of Supervisors authorizes environmental review for housing needs assessment project.
Support. Second. Okay. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Both carried. 26.
State Environmental Quality Review, Seeker Action on the Verona Village renovation project and designate County Manager Row as certifying officer.
Support. Second. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Both carried. Thank you Supervisor Barnhart. Okay Supervisor Partee, Mental Health Services, number 27.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Board of Supervisors approves the Robert Shields Contract Amendment.
Support. Second there. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Both carried. Thank you Supervisor Partee. Next up unfinished business. Any unfinished business? Okay. Any new business?
I got some, Chairman Heisen.
Yes, okay.
Workman's Comp budget.
You're going to do a Rule 29?
Yes, I'd like to have a Rule 29.
You want me to enact a Rule 29 that would encompass all business to fall underneath the Rule 29 for this evening?
That'd be a good idea.
Yeah. I'll make that motion.
Support. You're the expert on that. Got that resolution down.
He's efficient, all right? He's efficient.
Okay. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Both carried. Okay. What's it going to do, eh? Is that yours?
Yeah. Adopt Workman's Compensation Budget for 2023.
Support. Second there. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Both carried. Okay. Who takes the next one?
Mental health, looks like.
It's me.
Okay.
Authorize amendment to contract with Ronald Yearwood and Dina Schwartz.
Support. Second there. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Both carried. Okay. Next one. Who does C?
By Kyle.
Kyle.
Award Contract for Environmental Assessment Services and designate certifying officer for Verona Village renovation project.
Support. Second there. Okay. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Both carried. We're done now.
Mr. Chairman.
Oh. Does the planning board have to have one too, Mitch? The planning department, is this with it?
That was it.
That was it then, okay. Yes.
I have one. I'd like to make a resolution that we supervise or support bonuses for county employees not otherwise entitled by state legislation or executive action.
Got a second on that? Okay. Any discussion?
So.
Yeah.
Yeah. So what this would do, this would give all full-time county employees a $1,000 bonus and all part-time employees a $500 bonus. And this encompasses people that are not getting it through, if they've already gotten it, or are going to get it through the current legislation that's going through for healthcare workers and mental health workers. So this does not include them, the ones that have already got it or are currently eligible or going to get it. So these get all the other employees that are not getting anything.
Mr. Supervisor, I'd like to remind everyone that any bonus is handed out as a negotiated item with that union. It's just not something you can arbitrarily do. It's a negotiable, so you'd have to bring the union representation back into the picture. And many of our contracts that we're working on are taking care of the needs of our people. And I just think this is the wrong direction to go into. Things are being taken care of during the negotiation process. But you just can't arbitrarily agree to give out $1,000 to somebody. Jeff's probably a better expert at negotiations than I am, but I don't think you can legally do that.
Now, as Mike, or Jim Romer pointed out, when we brought this up to him, after we consulted with the board at the last meeting where we were given direction from the board, and we were told to address two items, and we did that with what we presented to you tonight, I think we over, I think we clearly did that. But Mike is correct, it would be a violation of the Taylor Law. It would be an improper practice to adopt a resolution simply gifting money to employees without negotiating that. I disagree with you gentlemen. It's already been done. It's already been done. It's going to be done. What are you going to, what are you going to do about the employees that are going to get it and the ones that aren't? I mean, you guys are forgetting about the people that aren't going to get any soon. I mean, there's some that could be eligible up to $3,000. That's on top of what you're talking about. This is a separate issue. I mean, you've got all these people that have been here through COVID, through the pandemic, employees that are working extra hours. I mean, this is something different. I'm not trying to go against what you guys have done or doing currently negotiating. This is something separate, and I think that's where we're getting mixed up. I'm not getting involved with what you guys are doing. When you're trying to compensate employees and you're subverting and going around the negotiating process, that is exactly what you're doing. We, this board set out and appointed people, by the chairman appointed people to go out and negotiate compensation. That's what we did, and we did it under the direction in this prior meeting of exactly what the board wanted us to do by giving us two directives, and we did that. Now you want to compensate further, which is fine, but that needs to go through a process. Or, I'm sorry, in my opinion, that should go through a process. And I will tell you 20 years, that is the law. Now, it is different. The money you're referring to that's coming from the state or federal government is entirely different. That money is grant money, and the federal or state governments can apportion that as they please. But when the money comes from us, that has to be negotiated.
And that's the opinion of our labor and employment attorney as well.
Now Jeff, is that the case even with the ARPA funds, since that is a, that was, part of that is, was part of that?
It can be used for wages. It's us. We are the, I mean, so you could use it for wages perhaps, but that money, it's our money, right? It's been apportioned to us directly. What Mike is referring to is, and it's happening in school districts too, where the federal or the state government is directly trying to compensate for additional responsibilities and stresses and such for mostly healthcare workers, and it applies to school as well. That's a diff, I agree with you, that is a different scenario. But what you're saying is, I'm assuming you're talking about taking ARPA funds? Yes. And so, I mean, that, that's a different situation, in my opinion.
I'll offer an amendment, as long as it's not illegal, then you pay them.
You have an amendment.
What's, I'm sorry, what was the, so what's the amendment?
The amendment is, as long as there's nothing illegal about it, then pay the employees their bonus, as offered by Mike.
I thought when we offered a law, it was implied that it wasn't illegal, but.
Anybody do the calculations?
I don't agree that we're doing something illegal, so.
Did anybody do the calculations?
If the numbers from payroll are correct that I have, it'll be about $360,000.
One-time shot.
One-time shot.
Do we get a second on the amendment?
I don't know how you can passively vote on something.
Get a second on the amendment?
I'll second it.
Okay, now we're in discussion on the amendment.
I'm sorry, Dan, what was the amendment? I'm sorry.
As long as there's nothing illegal about it, then offer and pay the bonuses out.
Then, I think we need to get an interpretation from a labor attorney. I'm not going to put County Attorney Edman on the spat here.
I agree. You know, but we vote on it, and then as long as there's nothing illegal about it, then, you know, it moves forward. And if the attorney says that it is totally illegal, just like Jeff just said, then you don't do it. You don't pay it.
Well, I mean, you could still negotiate it.
Sure.
Jeff, can I ask you something? Are you saying that in order to do this, it's just a matter of bringing the union to the table and say, we want to offer this, and they just have to say, yes, we'll take it, or no, we won't take? I mean, I can't.
For example.
I can't see the, well, let me ask you this. I can't see the, well, let me ask you this, how would you do it for non-union employees that are in, that don't fall under terror?
If they're not represented, then you don't have to negotiate it.
Okay.
However, I, I caution you because, you know, it may seem like an easy thing to do, and it's free money, and what the hell. But you, as we have seen, I've seen it in almost every negotiations, and we've seen it in all three here, is even good intentions can be interpreted incorrectly. And the simplicity of saying, well, five hundred for part-time and a thousand for full-time, oh, isn't that awesome? You may, and you know this, because you've brought it to our attention, you may create more angst because it doesn't make any sense as compared to what we did in negotiations on trying to come up with a rational formula and reward people based on their job title and their years of service. Because if I've been here 30 years, I'm gonna get a thousand, yet the person who's been here a year is gonna get a thousand? Yeah, that's fair.
Well, I think this is for sticking with us through the COVID, that period of time, not for how many years they've been with us, it's.
No, no, that's my point.
Is just this period of time. Thank you.
I'm just.
Any supervisors getting a thousand dollar, no?
It excludes the board of supervisors.
Excludes the board of supervisors, huh. How come, we, we were in executive session, how come with your labor attorney lawyer right there, present?
Could've asked.
Why didn't you run a bio?
Again, because I do not believe this is something to do with your negotiations, that's what I've said.
I don't know that, Mike, I don't have enough faith in my knowledge about the law, I don't have enough faith. I'm not an engineer and I'm not a lawyer. I, I can't, I can't comment on something I'm not an expert in, and I caution this board the same way. That's why you pay these people.
Any more discussion on the amendment? Yes, Mr. Shipley.
Are there any employees not covered by negotiated contracts that this would apply to?
Yeah, all your.
Is that what you're, is that what you're trying to say?
All your supervisors, all your managers.
And part-time.
I'm not referring to one or the other, I'm referring to all of them.
Well, see, and I think that's why it, for all the good intentions, and I do want to applaud the good intentions, the, it would be wise to do it, I think. It would be wise to, I mean, have a list of people and saying, here's who we actually think this should go to. Because it, I mean, already there's a lack of clarity about who this would and would not apply to, and I would remind you, as Mike did, we still have to look at all the supervisors and managers and make sure that their salaries are competitive. We haven't even gotten to that point yet.
Have a question.
Will this include the lady that just retired after 33 years, because she's already gone?
Good question. Or how about somebody who retired in January?
Yeah.
I guess, there's so many unknown questions. How many of your employees are in mental health? Anybody know that, other than Margaret?
About the employees that just started, weren't here for COVID, weren't here for. There's a lot of ifs, if you're gonna do it for COVID.
You got people just recently hired, as David's saying, that were part of the COVID crisis. They get it?
Sounds like it.
And I, and I guess in a further, in a more thorough conversation, thoughtful conversation, if, if indeed the board is that generous, then you really be generous, that money should have been added on to the settlement where it would become a part of their base salary and would grow for them, and then also impact their final average salary for retirement.
So what are you gonna do about the people that already got the bonus through a, through a memorandum of understanding, through a union and, union group that you're saying is against the law? That's already been done, it's already been done in this county. You guys are forgetting about that, it's already been done.
It was money earmarked by the state, it wasn't.
Exactly. Well, you got more money coming, what are you gonna do about those other people? Nothing? What's gonna happen with them? Nothing?
No, they're, we're taking care of them. I, I don't like, so this is, no matter how this shakes out, this is gonna be, you know what? Mike Farrar is against, opposed to giving out a thousand dollar bonus, and I think that's an awful way to present this, okay? And Mike Enzlow is in favor of giving a thousand dollar bonus to people. So I'm the bad guy, you're the good guy, but you're not doing it the right way.
That's your opinion, Mike, and you can say that.
That's, that's what we're all here for, to have our opinions, okay?
Absolutely.
Well likewise, and I would add another part to that debate then is, I don't, if you want to do it, it shouldn't be ARPA funds. Quite frankly, you know, I'm looking at, you know, then we ought to spend four hundred thousand dollars helping the people in the proposed Qegan Sewer, or Seneca Lake Sewer districts afford sewer. Or we ought to help, we're gonna need a new water tower, we ought to be spending money on that, again.
Or a new road, or a new bridge.
Well, if you're gonna do that.
We have an ARPA committee that, that didn't, didn't approve this, what's the sense of having a committee? We, we have a committee that meets on a regular basis, and we talk about needs that are brought there. Last time we had an ARPA meeting, we talked about buildings and grounds in a, in a new highway department that's completely outdated. So we're not, we're gonna totally bypass the committee and arbitrarily say we're gonna get four hundred thousand dollars of the ARPA? So let's just abandon all the committees we have and just go ahead, do what you gotta do.
Well, then we might as well get a committee started to take care of the employees that work for us that are getting a low wage that qualify for public assistance through Seneca County.
We, we, we are in the process of taking care of them through negotiated contracts, okay? One, group of employees have settled, and two, are pending settlement.
You're gonna get that done, but again, you're still leaving a group of people out that won't get anything, Mike. Not from the negotiated wages, I'm talking about the extra money that people are getting. That's what I'm talking about.
So you're mad that people in mental health got X amount of dollars?
No, I'm not mad.
And people in the sheriff's department didn't? I'm, I'm missing the point here.
I think that, uh, there's a faction of employees in the county, and they showed up two meetings ago. And, uh, you know, the talk around the water cooler is the fact of the matter that these people did get this money in mental health, and they feel like they got slighted. And I think that conversation is happening, uh, and I believe that they know that you're gonna take care of them in negotiations and everything else, but that, you, you can't discount the fact that they are having this conversation, that it is happening in the county, and.
I think the faction of people that came here that night were the people who came out of committee that we were going to up, move them upgrades. It came out of committee, but never made it to the board, I tabled it, and that, again, was under the advice of our labor and attorney, our labor and employment attorney, as well as the CSE, CSCE representative, who said they didn't want that to happen. They wanted it to be through negotiation session. I think that's the talk around the water cooler, that those 43 positions didn't get bumped up like they thought was gonna happen.
Yep, and there, there's definitely this talk, and I think it's good that this conversation and these motions and amendments have happened, because now, anybody that wants to go back to the tape from tonight's meeting could see that it's been negotiated, union waiting on settlements and contracts, that you have taken them into consideration, that that was not a foregone thought, that we are acknowledging that that did happen in mental health.
Right.
And I think that moving forward, if anybody wants to review what we have just been talking about for the last 20 minutes, they will know that they have been taken into consideration. We have definitely thought about the thousand bucks, and it did go into the new contracts and everything else, so.
Well, and not for nothing, the, um, if in fact it happens as we hope it will, and that the contract gets approved and it occurs, let's just say September, the amount that we're talking about is three times what's being proposed through this ARPA gift.
And that's coming into effect this year if they sign?
Yes, if, in September, if they agree to.
They are getting, they are, okay.
Agreed to.
Okay, anybody else want to discuss this amendment?
Can I, if, if this goes through to the contracts, what is the plan to take care of part-time employees as was talked about through this motion? So I mean, but in other words, we can't negotiate with them, so if everything else is taken care of in contracts, and part of Mike's motion was to cover part-time employees, is that a discussion that's going to happen?
Part-timers are included in the contract negotiations.
In what union?
In CSCE, there are, we have a whole list.
Okay, but I don't believe, I believe that might be the only union they're covered in.
That I don't know, I'd have to ask.
Okay.
I don't think so.
It wasn't long ago, there was a resolution that passed that brought all the part-timers up to full-time entry pay, and that's the way it's gonna be from now on. So they don't have to worry about going back and negotiating with the part-timers all the time. So if the full-time gets a raise, so will the part-time. So they've been taking care of them.
So that is my understanding that any, but then I guess my question is, any raise given to a part-timer does not have to be negotiated through the union?
Again, depends which civil service titles you're talking, because.
Because at first we were talking that they're not covered by the contract, then it was, if we want to give money, they fall under the contract, so we have to negotiate with the union. So I guess, I'm just looking for clarification one way or another, if at some point through, after contract negotiations are over, if going off Mike's resolution on the part-time employees, do we have to negotiate with the union on if they wanted to give them X amount more?
We only have to negotiate with the, you know, the labor organization for the people that they represent, whether it's part-time or full-time regardless. Right, so, and I would agree, if there's someone we miss, just like we have to look at the supervisors and the managers, when I say supervisors, I don't mean us, I mean labor supervisors, then we should absolutely look at them.
And, and not to downplay our employees, but again, and I've said it again, and I've said it numerous times, the people behind us who during COVID endured a great deal of stress and extra time and so forth, okay? And we still need to take care of these people, and we need to take care of them, and that's something that's not, a budget hasn't been created. People who were supervised and other people during that crisis, they've had it really tough the last two years, real tough.
Anybody else?
And I would just say, I mean, again, absolutely appreciate the intent, but, and I've been asked this before, and I know there was a committee meeting before, uh, last month, but it would just be nice, especially for someone who's new, to see a real laid-out plan for all the ARPA funds. Because again, there's, you know, I'm, I'm thinking back to Kyle's suggestion, you know, then why not four hundred thousand to every town or something? I mean, just, there are so many infrastructures.
That's a great idea, I don't remember that, but that's a great idea.
I knew you'd like that.
I knew that was gonna come.
The, but just the, the idea that there are so much infrastructure needs, and there are so many opportunities that will, for, if we treat those infrastructure needs and address them, will provide an even bigger tax base to make sure that we have the tax base to have competitive salaries and such go forward.
Okay, okay, it's all those in favor that's amendment, say.
Roll call vote, please.
Great, can I ask, can we clarify what the actual motion?
No, we're just doing the amendment right now, Dan's amendment said if it's legal, we will go ahead.
Okay, so this vote is, we're just voting on?
The amendment.
Adding whether it's legal or not to the amendment. I just want to make sure we all understand what we're voting.
Then it'll have to be a vote again, if that one passes, then you have to vote on the whole thing as amended.
If it's.
I just said that, and I just say that? I just say we have to vote on the amendment, if it passes, we have to go back and vote, new resolution as amended. Right?
Right.
But Mr.?
You got it.
Mr. Chairman, can I just ask a question, because it, so is it legal? Well, it could be legal under certain circumstances. Is, is the question just that, is it legal just to give them the money and not negotiate, you know, what?
Are you saying after advice from labor, from our labor attorneys?
Yeah, whoever the expert is. So just, oh, you can't do that, then don't do it.
And just to be clear, I, I just, so, the motion, if we vote this through, if, if we, if it goes through and passes, and the labor attorney who we're using says can't do it, then it's, is it, it's a dead issue at that point? Does there have to be another vote?
No, you're just not gonna do it.
Okay.
Okay, all those in favor say aye to the amendment.
Aye.
Both?
Opposed.
Nay. Okay, roll call.
Need a roll call for one opposed?
Three opposed.
Two opposed.
Trout, Supervisor Trout?
Two. On the amendment. Me? Yes.
Supervisor Enzlow?
Yes.
Supervisor Reynolds?
No.
Supervisor Jeffrey Trout?
No.
Supervisor Brownell?
Yes.
Supervisor Barnhart?
Yeah.
Supervisor Borst?
Yes.
Supervisor Hayes?
Yes.
Supervisor Farrara?
No.
Supervisor Kronenwetter?
No.
Supervisor Reinhardt?
Yes.
Supervisor Partee?
Yes.
Supervisor Heisen?
No.
Close one.
And Supervisor Shipley?
Yes.
The motion passes, four thirty-four ayes to three sixteen nays.
Okay, now we'll go back to the motion as amended.
We decide on exactly what the wording was for that amended motion. If it's legal or if Romer says it's legal. Well, because I happen to know it is.
Well, we pay Romer so much money if he says.
Ton of money.
Take his word as gospel, right?
Well, not really. I go to my counterparts in Wayne County and Ontario County, they, they all have unions, they passed them, they sent me the resolution to show me, so I do know it's legal.
Well, it's, it's up to Romer.
It's up to Romer.
Well, and just for the record, we asked him today, and he said it was, see, this is the problem with saying, is it legal, is it not? You can do it, no, no, I, I don't mean you, Margaret, I'm just saying, you could do it, and then they may have to file an improper practice. So how you define legal, that's why I was trying to be more specific about it, so.
I'm gonna let him decide that. How much money do we pay him here?
A lot.
A bunch?
A bunch.
He can tell us whether or not it's legal.
He'll tell you.
Yep.
Okay, any more discussion on the motion that's now been amended?
Again, I, I find it very disheartening that we're actually taking a vote on something that we don't have any clue who it affects, how it's gonna be enacted, how many people does it include? Does it include people that started out early and, or started out after COVID? But we're gonna sit here and make a, a vote on that, that. I, I just find that hard to understand. But that's all I have to say, Mr. Chairman.
I agree with you too.
Well, Mike, do you have like a list of people who it would apply to and all that?
Good list.
I do not have a list, I have a draft resolution though.
Mike, would it be worth sending it back to committee, coming back with a comprehensive list, highlighting?
This is going under Rule 29.
Highlighting the full-timers and part-timers who aren't covered by the unions, so that we had the exact number?
I, I, I like, we already voted on the amended motion, so that's what I would like the rule was, Mr. Barnhart.
We're voting on a Rule 29 that never even made it to the agenda.
And then we consent, basically.
We voted on three other Rule 29s that all had details in them and so forth, but this one just must've came up from, I don't know where.
We don't even know how much the total cost is.
But we're gonna take a vote on it.
I said it earlier, three hundred and sixty thousand. So it's three hundred and sixty thousand that can't be spent on roads, bridges, sewer, water, internet, you name it.
Lakes.
You can spend it however you want, however makes you feel better. Go ahead, spend it on the Pope, the President, the ex-president, the dead, the past, the President, spend it however you want.
Mike, that's really helpful.
Down the Qegan nation.
That's amazing help, that's really helpful.
Spend it however you want, we could be here all night if you want to do that, spend it however you want.
Okay.
Uh, can I ask a question? Is this gonna go to someone who's been working for the county for a week?
Yeah.
Oh, well, yes.
It is. That's what the resolution has stated, they've been here for a day.
Is, um, how, how is the state grant, the, the mental health services grant, was that written with any sort of employment requirements, or is that the same thing?
Argue, could you address that?
Sure. I, I'm just, yeah, I don't know.
I can speak to the new healthcare worker program, and they actually specify vesting periods in which employees who work under certain titles for healthcare workers, mental hygiene, public health, et cetera, there's certain vested vesting periods that they have to have worked in order to qualify. And they're out, they're specifically outlined in the legislation.
And let me also remind people that there was, many of our employees were, I can't remember, Mitch, cop time during COVID? Right? Provided extra cop time during COVID?
Mm-hmm, for those that were on, you know, were not working remotely.
Yeah, okay.
Weren't some of those bonuses three thousand dollars for mental health?
How much, how much were they, a thousand?
A thousand dollars.
Thousand bucks?
The previous ones.
Correct.
And three thousand common now?
The, the new healthcare worker program, it's five hundred, a thousand, it's up to three thousand per individual if they meet the qualifications of the number of hours worked during specific vesting periods.
Maybe next week, uh, next month, I'll make a motion that we use three thousand dollars worth of ARPA money for every employee.
I think that's the point, so how is a thousand dollars fair if other people are getting three thousand dollars?
How's it fair if they get nothing?
New employees would qualify under.
That's the problem, Jeff, that's the whole problem.
The conversation's worthy, I mean, I, the conversation's worthy, as Don and Mike have both said, but, I mean, hearing the arguments, I think the vesting options make sense, the week-long employees don't make sense. I think it's a good move, Mike, but I think just a little bit of refinement, and we might have a lot more support than the room I'm reading at least. Because I like, I mean, the vesting options I thought were pretty, that's a pretty logical solution.
Is that a motion, Kyle?
And that's, no, I'm.
Is that an amendment?
It's discussion right now, I'm just gauging the room, trying to look at eyes here.
You're gonna make an amendment?
And Kyle, that's part of what you get through a thoughtful negotiated process, is you have those questions answered.
I agree. The, the 3,000 that the state's getting is on top of our negotiated process with our mental health workers, right?
Yes.
Trust me, I see both sides.
But they're also paying for it.
What's that?
They're, the state is also.
Yeah.
Paying.
That taxpayer.
Reading the bill.
Can I, just, I guess, in going by the reading the room kind of thing off Kyle's, I guess, what is the feeling of, is the board willing to do something should there be a refined way of doing it on top of where we are?
Right in the middle of negotiations right now. We're doing a lot.
I, I, I'm not arguing that point, but I, I'm trying.
Muddy the water.
Well, yeah.
I don't know, it needed to be acknowledged, it really did. And I, I know that you guys acknowledge it, right? But I, I'm sure that, you know, there's many people in this county that didn't feel like it was being acknowledged, and this was a separate, it's a totally separate thing than the union negotiations that you're going through, even though you're incorporating it in there, really wanted the people to understand that we knew what happened.
What?
Right? They really needed to know that, you know, and we've been talking about it now for 20 minutes. I don't think it's a bad idea to have a little bit more refinement as far as who's going to get this, how this is going to work. Should the retired woman get it? Yes. Anybody that worked through COVID should get it. I'd put that in there.
The week-long employee?
The week-long, the person that just started last week?
No.
No. They should not get it.
Should the money, should the ARPA committee have any say on it?
I don't know, do they want to?
Yeah. Yeah, I mean, they're the ones.
I mean, the whole board should have a lot of say on this one.
Coming from ARPA funds, that's, that's a resolution.
It needs.
I think it should be refined, so I'll make that a motion, refine it, bring it back and vote on it.
Through committee.